Call meeting order, please. We have a town council work session. Now, we're gonna add to the agenda personnel matter for EDA or for the closed session, but we don't need to formally adopt that, do we, Mayor?
A motion would be preferred, yes.
Now? Okay, so I entertain a motion to add to the closed session discussion on personnel matters.
And are you to vote closed items that were emailed to you?
Yeah, I think right now I just want to add the topic to the, and then we can formally vote on it when we get to it. Does that's the question, Doug? Do it that way?
Two items added to the closed.
Is it two?
Yeah.
Oh, it was PD?
PD financing.
PD and personnel. Alright, so I entertain a motion to add PD financing and personnel discussion to the closed session. Okay, has been a motion made by Mr. Holloway, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Seelock. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify with a Saint aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have two items added. Alright, so first on the agenda is a request for water sewer 338-53 Guard Hill Road for Chris Ramsey. Mr. Walts?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The town has received a request from Chris Ramsey for water and sewer service to facilitate the construction of approximately 150 rental apartments to be located on 3853 Guard Hill Road. In addition, taps will be needed for fire suppression. If approved, construction could begin in the late spring of 2020. Town code contains policies and procedures for the extension of water sewer to Warren County. Guard Hill Road is one of the six areas considered as an exemption. Just to note that Mr. Ramsey did request a boundary adjustment back in 2016, which was denied by the county. And I see Mr. Ramsey's here tonight as well to entertain any questions.
Okay, any questions for council?
Can you just clarify what the exemption was?
That is one that Doug's gonna have to weigh in on, on what the code is, because it's a little, I wouldn't say it's, it's vague. Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
And that's all I know, because it was exempted before I got here.
What, that is a vague exemption?
Yeah.
What is the, what is the exemption?
What it says, uh, is this, here real quick. It just says, Guard Hill Road within existing water service area. I don't know what that means.
So do we have water and sewer running up Guard Hill Road already?
Yes, sir.
Going past the area?
Yeah, we do, because we have a water tank.
Just water.
Sewer's down behind the open, but God, that'll be hot.
So we don't have it running up Guard Hill?
Not so, water, we don't.
So there's already water, they basically sewer in the area?
Yeah, it's available. The question I have, since it's in the county, then it's gonna be double the intail water rates.
That would be my assumption as well, that with the exemption areas here, and just for information, there's six areas. One, you've got Blue Ridge Shadows, McKay Springs, Kinsel Stone, which is your duck street, and then there's Guard Hill, and then there's Harmony Hollow Road in there as well. But these are under the code on the extension moratorium area, so this was back in 2012, I guess, maybe is when it was amended.
Okay, so the town, so the town provides water and sewer services outside town limits?
Do we provide customer just on Guard Hill Road?
Water, not sewer, water.
Andrew's asking for water and sewer. Okay, and we have capacity?
There, there are probably some limitations and some, probably some infrastructure improvements that will have to happen on, most likely Guard Hill Pumping Station, as well as I don't know what about on the sewer side.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not ready to vote on this yet, seeing or even give possibility of approval due to the fact that we're still waiting to get our information in regards to our services.
Water capacity, yep.
From Joe and all the other ramifications. So, you know, I wanna wait till we get all that to see where we're at in the water, how much water we have, what kind of limitations we got, all that.
Well, that's reasonable. What I was trying to figure out, maybe, maybe Gene knows this better, is why were those sites listed as extension sites for water and sewer, Blue Ridge Shadows?
Guard Hill was, because we ran the water line up Guard Hill, and it was done to a water tank out on the hill, about another mile out, I guess, something like that. We put a three million gallon storage facility very many years ago, back in the eighties.
With the intent of providing water to Guard Hill?
No, that was to get water to the corridor, because we didn't have enough pressure to feed the corridor. And so we put the three million gallon storage tank in, and then when they extended it out to Fairground Road and the tank, it didn't fill the tank, so that's when we re-instructed the new pumping station to bottom of Guard Hill.
Same thing with Harmony Hollow, when they did the tank.
Yeah, same with Harmony Hollow. That went up to Ford Center. The Ford Center was done, and that's how the water got up in that hollow. The Kinsel Stone is out on Main to Duck Street, and that they pay the double the intail water rates and the taps, whatever. So does the one out on 522.
And then how did Blue Ridge get included and asked about it?
I don't know, I'd have to go back and research it. I don't recall, I'm not sure if I was on the council during that particular two years, I'm not sure. I know it had something to do with the golf course.
I bet you weren't.
I probably wasn't. But I, I don't really, I can't answer. I can answer the others, because I was here when that was all.
I was just trying to understand the, the reasons for the exemptions. I mean, if it was done with the intent to provide water and sewer, you know, or to have the capabilities of doing that, then, you know.
It wasn't for that reason. It was a reason because we needed the infrastructure additional storage and they have to cover the areas that we already had anticipated, which was the 522 corridor, and then by the three million up there, and then when we built the other, three million, million, three, one, million up there.
Million.
It's a million gallon storage tank on the Fairground Road. We couldn't get it full, because the engineers had made a mistake in elevation. So then we had to re-upgrade the pumping station to fill both tanks, because through the equalization of the water to pull and whatever.
And in 2016, did we talk about the annexation of that prop, those, that area?
It was brought up, but I, we never did make a decision on it. Because the county had written us a letter stating that they were not willing to relinquish it to the town under annexation, so it came to us, and we just never made any.
Mr. Anderson, did you make that request?
I did, yeah, okay. Sorry, I couldn't remember around here. Conversation.
In the process, when he made the request, it was the county first, and then the county didn't want to entertain it, so it pretty much died at that point.
But they want us to extend water and sewer? Right, for those, those properties?
Uh, no, the request for water and sewer is directly from.
So, Mr. Ross, could you explain perhaps the process of what you anticipate moving forward as relates to this request?
My objective was first to get it on council's view of what the request was. I wanted to give Ramsey some opportunity up here. We still have to find out why the six areas were carved out. We, we need to, we need to do some research to find out, go back in the council minutes to find out what the intent was with all these areas, because we really don't know. I don't know, it was before my time, and, and so we were gonna have to find out exactly what the intent was and why it was assembled out here as an exemption.
Okay, so, as a, um, I just wanna, I, I wanted, because they asked really just for sewer then? Because water's already there?
No, he's requesting water and sewer service to, to his.
But water's already there.
Well, water's not a district, but he is.
Both are available, really.
Right, it's still.
Okay, so I guess Mr. Ramsey wants, wants to know our intent for water, to provide water and sewer prior to going through the formal process.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know if he planned, we into a formal process for, his formal process was a request of a letter.
Right, okay.
So that request, that formal process has started. I was just basically giving him an opportunity to bring the council up to speed with what is being discussed, but no vote at this moment.
I understand.
Because, like I stated in the meeting earlier, staff is prepared now. We've done our due diligence on what our water capacity limits and capabilities are in the system, out in the corridor as well. So I'm hoping that on the 16th or the 23rd coming up, that we can discuss that, and that 'll really dovetail into this conversation as well. And then hopefully at that time, I should have some more background work on why, what the intent was in the code here carved out.
Okay, that's my objective. I mean, I, I think in years past, many years ago, you know, a builder would come and then you slow rolled, and that's, that's not this council's intent. So if you think by the end of the month, we should have an idea of capacity, a fairly good discussion on that, you'll be able to do your research. So is the goal by next month, by October, sometime in October, to be able to give him some direction?
Yeah, that would be my intent.
Be reasonable?
The idea was to get it out front before, you know, in this whole process, when we're talking water, water in town as well as out of town, I thought was a good time to bring it up.
Does council, does council feel that as a reasonable path? Of course, we know, who knows what could come up in between, but I, I would, I would like to have that as goal, as first meeting in October, to be able to, that'd be a, a goal? Is that reasonable?
I would request possibly the second official meeting in October for a vote, if that's what you're talking about.
Okay.
Because we still have to.
Have another work session.
Right, we'll have to have a work session for detailed discussion.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Mr. Mezzo?
Is this still a 55 and older project?
Not, not my understanding, but if, Chris, do you want?
If I'm allowed to speak?
Sure.
We're looking at luxury fair market dining apartments, which will tend to serve that market that we specified previously, but being a rental form and host of ownership.
Okay.
And sewer and water are on the property. They're available to the property, but they are literally on the property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, ready to move on to the next, next agenda item? Thank you, Mr. Ramsey, thanks for coming out.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, discussion on tap fees. Many of us are very anxious to hear this. So who's lead the charge, Mr. Walts?
Robbie Boyer, he's, hold on, Robbie.
Anybody like a paper copy? I'm gonna get it.
Yeah, that's.
Here, I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or the council. As requested, we put some information together, nothing to town tap fees, as well as some of the other local towns.
I'm gonna need to speak up a little bit, please. Yeah, right there.
Just to compare with the services, and then the fees between the town and other local towns. We started with the towns. Currently, with the town, the builder is required to install the water and sewer taps and run the service service to the property line, and set the meter jar, and then run it to the house. Fees are based off the meter tap size. The town inspects the work that's performed by the contractor, and once everything's completed, the town provides and sets the meter for residential. One thing we don't have in here for the residential, I forgot, is the water closets. There is a water closet fee for each bathroom, based off what they submit. Let me see that.
That's at the bottom.
Is it at the bottom? Okay. Let me do it this way. Yep, you're right. Um, let's see here. So roughly for a three-quarter inch water tap point sewer in town, you're looking at $15,068. Out of town is $30,136. Like I said, that doesn't include the water closet fee.
And then it does not include the labor to connect it either?
No.
How much is that?
$1,000.
Well, actually, the gentleman that does most of those, just a lot. And $7,500 is what he charges for basic installation for water and sewer, and that's with no issues. So it get doubled.
Okay, thank you, Sergeant Boyer, for the interruption.
No, you're okay. The commercial, industrial commercial users, same thing, they must purchase their own meter. The first time, then, once that meter goes bad, the town will take it over and replace it or rebuild the meter. Same thing, it's based off their water size connection. Same thing with the water closets. Next sheet, just kinda breaks down all the different sizes. It also gives you in-town and out-of-town, the town, up to 12-inch. Town of Culpeper, the developer property owners responsible for connecting to the existing water sewer mains. Once the tap has been paid for and made, the town will set the meter, once the final inspection is done. The town of Culpeper does give the developer the option. They can pay the town to perform the installation. They charge to install it for time, material, and labor.
Do you have an estimate on what that is?
Not from Culpeper Nooser. And honestly, it would kinda vary because of the depth, the distance, one of those. Next one kinda just gives you an idea of their taps. They only had published up to four-inch. They said they don't really have many big taps, because not really having much industry or business. Frederick Water. Frederick Water provides the meters from five-eighths to two-inch. They install the taps, but they, they charge the builder a fee for labor equipment and materials as well. They go out ahead of time and figure up an estimate, and then go from there, and then once they get done, they actually build the contractor for the time that we spent material and labors. They provide it to the right-of-way at the meter box, and then the contractor takes it from there and has their plumber install it to the house. Any lines over six-inch, they make the contractor extend or upgrade. On the next page, that gives you their pricing, and kind of off what you were asking, Mr. Mayor. None of these, all these prices are just tap fees. None of this includes their, you know, their labor, material, equipment. Next, we have the town of Stralsburg. Town of Stralsburg puts taps in, and kind of the same thing, they charge the builder a fee for labor equipment, materials to install. They said most of their taps run somewhere between $2,000 and $5,000 to install. Town does not provide a meter, though they charge them a $300 fee to pay for the meter. And it kinda gets into the hotels and motels, nursing homes, and hospitals. Next page gives you theirs, theirs goes up to 10 inches, what they had published, the town of Stralsburg. Town of Woodstock, town of Woodstock for single-family homes, they install the taps. Same thing, again, they do charge for labor equipment and material to install the services to the property line. Developers or contractors doing subdivisions, they do make them install the taps and run them all the way to the, the house. Commercial, industrial motel's kinda the same thing as most of your other towns, it kinda breaks down restaurants, laundromats, car washes, they charge per bay. I think the restaurant, they charge per, yeah, $100 per seating. So it kinda gives you an idea of some of their fees. Next one is theirs, theirs goes up to eight-inch for the town of Woodstock, just as big as theirs goes. The city of Winchester, the builder contractor is required to install the water sewer taps and service lines from the main to the house, and the builder's also responsible for purchasing the meter. Same thing with that, they purchase the first meter, then the city takes over, and once it ever breaks, has any issues, and then they take over and replace it and maintain it. Here's a list of their fees, and they're not Winchester's, actually, only goes up to six-inch on line. Just kinda gives you a comparison there for theirs. Next, city of Harrisonburg, developer, builder, or private owner pays for the meter in addition to the tap fees, so the city doesn't provide it. The city of Harrisonburg does install the water sewer taps and service lines to the property line, and they as well charge the customer for labor equipment materials for the installation. Here's theirs, theirs goes up to 12-inch as well. Next sheet, is this kind of a spreadsheet, it breaks it down for you?
Is the standard household size, three-quarters?
Yep. Yep, that's kinda made a comparison side to side, for the total fees, and then the next one kinda breaks it down even more, gives you total per water, or for water for sewer than the grand total, just kinda gives you graph for ranges.
Okay, Robbie Boyer, any comments from council?
Where do we come up with it?
Sorry. I wanted to know, how can we reduce the amount that we're charging? This is a big spread, like the city of Harrisonburg is half what we're charging. Woodstock is less too, so how do we get more competitive if we want to get housing and those kinds of things here?
I know Harrisonburg said theirs is lower, because they have a lot more domain, because of the college and stuff. Woodstock, I'm not real sure. He said they only do a few a year, so I'm guessing maybe that's why it doesn't make a big difference, you know, for their.
Right.
For their budget, I'm guessing, you know, and what they do.
Can you just, I know I'm jumping ahead of Chris here, but for those of us who don't deal with this on a daily basis, can you explain what the purpose of the tap fee is?
The tap fee is, is connect, is what it is, to connect to the water sewer mains.
No, I, well, I got that.
So you're charging $15,000 just to tie into the line? So where did we go away with installing the water sewer tap fees? And where did we come up with $15,000?
It's part of a rate study that we done to determine the level of the fund, because it's like every new customer is kinda like buying into the system and paying for the infrastructure.
You pay for it on a monthly basis, so?
Well, that's fine, yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't know when the last time we did a study on these taps, to determine what.
I'd say it was 2012.
2015. I mean, if it's council's pleasure, you know, we are, to be honest with you, we are preparing to get out another cost of service study, and I don't know if it's gonna go down into the depth of the taps, but we can look into that as well. But we are, we are in a position that we're gonna have to do another cost of service study for our water and sewer, for the simple fact, Dominion's usage has changed some, and some other parameters have changed in the water system. So we are gonna be entertaining that here in the near future, and we can address these taps if we want, again, and take another hard look at it, because looking at them, it does appear we're on the higher end here among other communities.
Well, I'll go ahead, Gene.
Let me, let me throw two cents in here. When this thing was done in 2012, we started, had started in 2008 to start our water sewer treatment, and the cost started out at $40,000 plus. And when we did the study through our consulting engineers at that time, these were the rates for the sewer that they had recommended, was the sewer rates that you see on this piece of paper, which is $9,780. And that was to cover the costs for the additional costs for the expansion of the sewer plant, and to allow that amount of sewer go into the plant, because we were mandated by the DEQ to upgrade our plant and the whole nine yards. So that's when these, these figures came in on the sewer. The water came in earlier than that, and because it was a study made, I'm not sure exactly, sometime after I was, became the mayor, there was a study made, and that was, that time we had spent $3 million to upgrade this water sewer, water treatment plant. And that was done, I don't know, 2010, I believe it was.
And then the second upgrade happened?
Second, okay.
Yes, sir.
And when that was, study was done, it also came back that these were the rates that we, they had recommended us to charge, and that's where the charges came from.
So, may I ask you a question?
To me?
Yeah, no, you.
Sure.
So as it relates to, in 2008 or 2010, whenever the study was done, did the town perform the physical tapping, or did, was it outsourced to a third-party contractor?
The day that I left the town, about a year later, when they hired a new director of public works, I don't know who changed it, but somewhere along the line, they changed it after I left the department, because we put all, in all the water and sewer taps ourselves. And in turn, after I left sometime, they changed it and started charging the contractor, charging the developer to put in the water and sewer taps.
It was after 2012, because I was.
And it was still.
Yeah, I'm gonna sum it up, I think. I think I got it figured out. Mr. Glesker?
Robbie, do we still have the equipment to make these caps?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we have, you know, it's old one, and we bought it, you know, it's been a good while back, but I mean, I'm sure we could clean it up if we had to.
Uh, someone on this side, Mr. Seelock, Seeller?
Does staff not have the capability to install these taps?
Yes, we do.
We do have that capability.
Like, like Robbie said, some of the equipment, we may have to take a look at, see if it's gonna be up to snuff, but there's no reason why, if it's council's desire for us to take that over, you know, honestly, I've been listening to some of the conversations, and I guess that really it's, it's harder on the developer finding somebody to be able to do this tap fee, and, or to make the actual taps, so I do see that there may be a benefit for the town to take that.
Well, I'm looking at a $200,000 or $300,000 home, and you're going somewhere between seven to 11% of the cost of a home with tap fees. And my next question would be, what is this money used for if you don't, you know, you just put it in the coffers?
It's budgeted into our budget, the revenue is, so it offsets our expense.
Keeps the rates.
That's why the rates were done, because paying for the $50,000 water treatment and her sewer treatment and the water.
You have two correct rates, yeah.
But let me, let me, let me say something, because I did these for many, many years. Installation is, sounds easy, and don't get me wrong, I'm not sure that it would be best for it. But your problem is, anything over the depth of five feet, you gotta go work on the OSHA. And so when you get under that, that's gonna create a problem for our employees, because we don't have any of the equipment for OSHA, I doubt anymore. If they do, I'd be surprised. And I have a feeling that's the main reason why they went back and started to get a contractor to do it. Now, we're on the OSHA, if you get called over five feet without sloping into a two-to-one slope, or without a trench box, we're gonna be fined heavily. And then I tell you, front row, we got a lot of limestone, and you get limestone rock, so you're gonna have to hire somebody to come in, blast the rock out where the sewer line is, goes through a water, or the water line goes through a rock, and you'll have to do that as well. So, so I'm not sure which is the best way to go. It sounds like it's not good for us to do it, because I've advocated it too, and you and I've talked about it. But I've got to thinking about these things, and I don't know what the contractors do, but I do know that if, if we do it, anything over five feet, it's got to be sure, or it's got to be slow back, like I said, on two-to-one. If you go out in the street, it's eight foot deep, then you're gonna have a ditch 30 feet wide.
We don't, you mean to tell me we don't have boxes?
Yeah, we have boxes.
That's what I thought, yeah. We got, because we go out and do repairs, we do sewer and water line repairs all the time, so we got.
I didn't know that, I'm just saying.
So we gotta be working on duration all the time.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, I mean, plus, you got a private contractor out doing work on our right-of-ways. So if an accident were to happen, you know.
Mr. Glesker, do you have a question or comment?
I saw your hand.
Anyone else?
Okay, now I'm gonna say something. I don't do this often, but I'm gonna do it. This has been a sore subject for me, and the town's water policy, water pricing for over a decade has been an issue for me as a private citizen, not because I've done any development in Warren County, but philosophically, from my perspective, okay, I've, I've been on this, I've seen it, I've seen, so we sit, we sit around and we have a goal of workforce housing. We sit around and we want to be able to build housing and apartments for our teachers and for our firemen and our police officers, right? And you wonder why we don't have any projects going on in town limits? It's pure economics. It's pure economics. When you have a house that's constructed, or you have an apartment that's a reasonably priced apartment, or whatever the case is, and these things are priced at a usury level, 10%, 12%, 15% of a new home construction goes to a tap fee, we gotta fix that. So I have a few more weeks on council, and when I'm, November 7th, I'll be off council, and I hope to come and talk to you at the podium and beg you to fix this, because this has gotta be fixed. If we wanna have, look, economic development out in the corridor, economic development in the corridor, okay? These businesses, these businesses playing the closet fee, we have a business on Main Street that paid a lot of money for a water closet, lot of money. We all know about that, right? And we've gotta take a holistic view of, of how we're gonna fix this, from my perspective. So I'll get off my high horse, I apologize, but what's the council's pleasure of how you want to move forward as far as evaluating our policy as it relates to these tap fees and the water fees, both in-town and out-of-town? Do we want to continue, you know, do we want to add the double, double water fees as part of our discussion? I don't know, but I tell you, it's, you know, we, on one hand, we cry about not having enough economic development, enough commercial development, enough affordable housing, but we need to look at our policies and procedures, because I'm not certain, I'm really not certain that we're as business-friendly as we want to pretend we are. And I think we need to really look at this and, and do it in a timely manner and have a set goal. I know it's on our, it's on our plans, right? It's on our goal setting? Is that right?
Not on the tap fees, no, sir.
I thought the tap fee was part of our public utilities. Well, it should be, so, sorry, I said my piece.
Well, I'd echo what the mayor said. When I joined council, the first thing I did was sit with the builder association, and that was the first thing I heard. and that was the first thing I heard. First thing out of the crackerjack box was tap fees. And just doing a simple math here, when you're looking at seven to twelve percent of building a house, I'm, I'm struggling. And then when I hear that we put it in the coffers to offset costs, I'm thinking, you use that money to reduce your fees? Is it not for infrastructure or whatever? I'm really struggling with that. That's, that's my concern.
Well, I, I had always thought that we charged tap fees to cover the cost of the installation. That's what I had. I mean, years ago, I know that's what it was. But it seems like it just kept going up, kept going up, kept going up. And it's gotten to the point where, you know, if you want to go out and, like Matt was saying, do a development, I mean, just think if you went out to do ten town, ten town homes, or ten homes in an area, just think your tap fees. If you got to pay the fifteen thousand dollars, that's not including the installation.
Twenty-two grand.
Yeah, at, at minimum, minimum, minimum. It could be thirty grand.
Right.
I mean, thirty thousand dollars for your tap.
Right.
It's ridiculous.
But again, though, Mr. Tewol, but Matt, again, I mean, I'm not, I'm not emphasizing this, but you've got to realize two things here. Number one is, when we did the infrastructure, that's where this money is going to. To pay back the infrastructure that we've done, spent fifty million on a sewer treatment plant and six or seven millions on the water treatment plant. That's where this money is going to. It's not going in the coffers.
You're not going to get that money, oh, if people don't want to pay that bill?
I'm not saying, no, I'm just explaining to you where it goes. Because Bill said he didn't know where it was going. But that's where it's going to go. Now, the day that you change this, that means the coffers go down. When you say coffers, if you want to look at it that way, but it's going to pay the loans that we already owe, and BJ can account for that, to pay off those debts. If we do the twelve million dollars out in the corridor, and we lower all these, that means we're going to have to bring more money somewhere that's not going to be in our coffers to pay that twelve million dollars through the Dominion Power or whoever that we solved two weeks ago on this board. So when we do this, we're going to have to realize that if we take it away here, it's got to be added over here somewhere. Now, if we take it away here, it's going to be added to your water and sewer bill.
Well, I agree with that, but you're talking about tap fee versus.
Hang on, hang on, you're right.
If you do this, and you take this money away from your coffers or the cost that we're paying for the water and the sewer treatment plants, and that means you're going to have to charge more water to every other customer in-town or out of-town to cover the reduction in this one, to cover the cost of the water treatment plants and sewer.
Thank you. I'll, I'll comment in a minute. Bill, Gene?
Your comment there was saying that it's to pay back for infrastructure.
Exactly.
But you're also getting a monthly fee from that resident in that house to pay for that service.
That's general maintenance.
That's paying back in to the system as well.
But that's general maintenance, to take care of the system that's already in place.
So BJ, you're telling us that a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the monthly fees are only paying for general maintenance? It's not paying, paying service debt? It's not paying the debt?
Of course you are, that's paying the service debt.
Okay.
I was gonna, I was just gonna comment, if that's the case, this is, I think, what to Mayor Tidrick's point was, you know, if you have one house, it's going to pay thirty, twenty-five thousand dollars in tap fees. And that money's used for paying back the, the building or development of the infrastructure versus ten houses that are going to pay half the tap fees, but you get more money out of it because you have more coming to the market. I think it's one of those, you know, what comes first? If you incentivize it on the front end to allow for easy development, with lower tap fees, could you not make more money off of it as, you know, there's more development?
Well, I don't disagree with any of what you're saying. I'm just trying to explain where the money goes to and how it got there.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, it's, it's, I, it's really helpful to understand.
Let me finish here, too. The corridor, the reason they're doubling in-town rates, nobody out in that corridor ever paid a nickel to build a water treatment plant, a sewer treatment plant, the infrastructure in Front Royal, to get the water from this point to that point. They haven't paid a penny of that. That's why we're charging the double in-town water rates into all the customers in the, in the corridor.
I hate that, by the way. If someone was out there and didn't know it, and got shit with that.
I know.
And that's just me on.
Somebody, I mean, I don't think it's quite fair for the taxpayers in Front Royal to build all the infrastructure and then allow somebody else to go out here and tap on it the same rate I have to pay if I live in Front Royal. So that's the reason for that. And all that came through the study that we did when we built the treatment plant and when we did the expansion to the water treatment.
But doesn't the double.
This is where all these figures come from.
Didn't there double tap fee offset for the infrastructure development out there?
Do you realize how much money is invested in our sewer system?
But you can't take it out on.
Well, we can debate. I can tell you from my perspective, my perspective, okay? As a citizen of this community, there was, there was a, no, there was a majority of council at some point and a town manager at some point that did not want any growth in Warren County and wanted no growth in town in Front Royal. So what do you do? You jack up rates, and we're going to gouge people. That's my perspective. And Gene, I respectfully, I do, I respect you tremendously in your institutional knowledge. And we can debate this for a long time. And, and I just, I respectfully disagree as it relates to the, the capital expense of buying a tap fee, paying off debt, you're, I, I don't, I don't necessarily adhere to a hundred percent of that argument, but, you know, anyways.
Why are we saying that? I'm just saying that's what it was done for.
Well, that's what.
That's why it was done.
I, I respect that. Thank you.
And I could, BJ can attest to that.
I'm just saying, it seems to me we need more input into this information. Because you're telling me on one hand, you're, you're paying off debt by these tap fees. But I heard BJ say, well, a percentage of it.
It depends on the amount of tap fees we have, obviously.
How much tap did we get for the industry at what point out there?
I don't know off the top of my head. Yeah, I mean, yes.
Like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars? Something like that?
For some of the big ones.
Just one, one project?
Yeah, one, yeah.
One project, one project. Did a hundred percent of that get applied towards the debt? No, it's sitting in our reserve. So that's right. I, I know the game, okay? I know the game, and I'm here to tell you, I'm ready for a vote on this when you guys are ready. So I'm not, I don't vote, I'll be glad to break a tie, and I'm scoring lead if I break a tie. So.
Well, I want to see us come up with something to move forward, and I'd rather see it done sooner than later.
I'm, I'm, it's council's pleasure. What's your pleasure? Joe?
I would caution not to make any changes to the tap fees until we do a cost of service study.
How soon can you do that?
Really, we were waiting for this last piece, which is now we have, this eleven-point-eight million corridor loop. That was what we were waiting on. We can get moving forward, but we're still talking probably three months of due diligence here, right?
Yeah, it's not going to work for me.
Okay. I just think it's a bad business move, but.
We also have the INI basement coming down the pipe, which is going to be huge and a big impact for us.
Ah, look.
I'm just concerned that we need to build houses in this town. And if that is the drawback, is tap fee, a builder, and that's all I hear. Every time I go anywhere and talk about.
I could put water and sewer out in the county for basically the same price I pay for tap fees.
And that's with a well.
And that's with a well. That's with a well that's septic. That's conventional. But I, I did it out in Rockland. Sixteen thousand dollars sewer treatment. And they, they came up, drilled a well, put a, put a septic system in, sixteen thousand dollars. And I come here, fifteen thousand dollars, I don't get anything.
And it's not installed.
Exactly.
You've got to pay in top of that.
You've got to pay on top of that.
But you've got to realize, too, that, look at all the others. You've seen these, they're all almost the same as we're charging.
And most of them do the installation.
Yeah, they do the installation. We got away from doing installation.
But it costs the, costs the material.
That costs.
Yeah. All of them are costing material. There's one in there.
Okay.
I mean, we got, how many lots available, so-called available in Front Royal, the bill was, was it eighteen hundred?
Nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred?
See, those, let me say, all those.
So if we, if we were to cut those tap fees, do you think that would start happening?
They're already being installed by the developer when those are.
Are they already doing it right now then?
No, they don't.
All right, that's what I'm saying. Gene, it's not happening right now.
Right.
It's not.
Again.
I mean, you're saying.
I'm just saying, he's got to have more time to look at this further than, all of us will get, need to study these charts a little closer. Because you've got historical knowledge that I don't think anyone sitting on this council right now has that knowledge until we saw this paperwork tonight.
History doesn't build houses.
Right. I'm not concerned with the historic, the history necessarily, but I am concerned with what's, what a study would show us on current statistics or whatever that we need to do. But I do want it pre-tuned.
I want to lower about five thousand dollars next, next meeting. That's what I want to do.
Yeah, I want to see it lower. I want to see it lower, but I want it smart.
People shake.
I, I, I would like to see it lower. I'd like to see us install the taps. I mean, because you don't know what you're getting into. You know what I'm saying? If we don't lower it, I think we should at least install the taps.
Okay, so, good discussion. I know, boy, can I, can I make a request as far as this document goes? The, are you able to add, I'd like to get some better information. Let me go to my notes, I'm sorry. Hang on, I'll make notes. Water closet fees, I'd like to get an idea of our water closet fees compared to the other jurisdictions? Because I've heard, I've heard some, I've heard some really interesting data on that that concerns me. Also, I think it'd be helpful if we could get an estimate of where you say labor, material. I'm sorry, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, and I'm, I don't do this for a living. I have no idea when you say labor, material, what that would be in some of these other jurisdictions. Can you, can you kind of come up with a different chart to give us an idea of really what, really what we're after? What's the all-encompassing fee of tapping at these various lines? I agree, I understand the, the point, depends on depth, and.
Yeah, put an average.
Whatever, whatever variable, yeah. Yeah, whatever variable you use, just be consistent, so we can see that. That'd be really helpful. And then, Joe, you mentioned wanting to get a study done, or more, we can talk about that Thursday, maybe, of the process, getting it on an agenda, get it approved. Is that your plan?
Yeah, actually, we are just, like I said, we were waiting for that final piece, which is the corridor loop, eleven-point-eight million to plug in there. So really, at this point, staff can start working on the RFP. We can start working on the RFP and get it out on the street, but I caution you, it's going to take three months. It's just due diligence to find out what's going to happen if you, it's just over here to here.
I'll be a proud citizen.
Let me, let me interject one more time. Today, we cut the fees in the middle of a budget year. That money's got to become, come from another source. So wherever you do, everything you do, where you cut, BJ's going to have to find money in the budget somewhere and cut something else to cover whatever, wherever the amount of money that we cut back on the water and sewer taps.
Gene, I can't let you, I can't let, I'm sorry, I can't let you get away with that. That's not, that's not.
Yeah, but again, I want to get those tap fees. How are you going to get tap fees if they don't want to?
I'm just saying, if you start cutting, I don't care if you cut one or a hundred.
You cut one, and then two houses come, what do you have?
You can't approve, that ain't the way, ain't what I'm saying. You got to find a way to cover the costs when you start cutting your budget in the, in the middle of a year.
What if we get no taps?
Already allocated.
What if there are no new taps? What if there are no new taps? What if there were no new taps, no new construction in one year?
Then we'd have a deficit.
Well, we still have it covered, that's what I'm saying.
How are you going to have it covered?
During budget process, we budget approximately how many taps? And I don't know what that many taps that is, but what, what Gene Tewol is stating is is that our budget is built upon a certain amount of revenue. So if you, if you adjust that point of revenue, then we have to, you know, we have to balance it on the other side.
If you want to do it, wait till a budget year cycle, and then if you want to.
We're in a budget year cycle.
Every year, I hear we build a budget on two and a half percent growth. I haven't seen two and a half percent growth in this town since, since whenever. We build a budget on that.
We don't build a budget on two and a half percent.
Okay, what is the magic number?
There is no magic number. When we go through my revenue forecasting, if you notice, there's not one, none of them are the same. All of them are different. It's based on that individual revenue line item. The growth for the tap fees comes from planning and zoning. I'm projecting off of the number of new houses they forecast being developed.
How many new houses built this year?
Uh, well, twenty or so.
Twenty in this town.
I don't remember the exact number, but it's up from last year.
Today, it's county.
I don't want to talk county, I'm not talking about town.
Virginia Avenue has a few this year.
In-town, do you know?
Ramsey's. Ramsey's project has had a few in Virginia Avenue scattered around.
Jeremy, I can't remember, but when I was on planning commission, we had a lot of conversation with FRLP and tap fees specifically, and proffers tied to tap fees and/or credits or whatever. Next time we talk about this, I would like to know what kind of impact it has on, like, that's one of the larger developments.
Let's have the association come and talk to us.
Into the town. Because, and again, I don't remember the details, I just remember this, there was a lot of conversation related to our tap fees and how that.
But he's got to weigh in all the costs. The tap fees itself is not the problem, but collectively, when you weigh in the cost for infrastructure, building in the roads, added with the tap fees. He's concerned about everything.
Have you got some sort of credit for the tap fees or?
With his current proffers, you mean?
Yeah. And so I would just, I would be curious of what impact it would have on that. Again, being one of the larger developed areas for, for housing. If we made a change, would that have a greater impact, financial impact on us?
And the cost of service study does cover all of that. When we provide them the information, we have to provide them all of the forecasting for those developments and things like that. So they do take those into account, and that would be the best source of information.
Most of it, I tell you, it's economics. How much do we have in our unrestricted fund balance for water and sewer enterprises? Several million, many million?
No, maybe two million, maybe two million.
Well, plenty of money. Okay, anything else on water and sewer? I look forward to the next discussion. It's good to have a lively discussion occasionally. Thanks, and Gene, thanks for that institutional knowledge. That's good. It's very invaluable to have. You know, sometimes we, we don't thank you enough for what you, the history that you have, so that's, thank you. Okay, number three on the agenda, thank you, Robbie. Number three on the agenda is open discussion. There's something I was supposed to do, an open discussion. Oh, it was the, that water property. Did you want to?
Yeah, we had a request from some neighbors that lived, I'm not going to give you addresses and things, I don't want to get out of the paper. But anyway, it was some neighbors making a complaint about some tree being planted on one of our right-of-ways. And Mr. Tidrick and I went out and talked to the person. And talked, I talked later after you left, talked to the property owners, and we worked this figure, issue out. So without going into all the details with the castle, I'll tell you individually, because I don't want to get into newspapers. I can tell you individually, unless you tell me to do it.
No, that's fine.
And I'd rather not do it that way. But we worked out the issue with the neighbors and the person that was requiring, we had required him to remove the trees. And then we met, and then I think we've got it all worked out where we don't have to go back in and follow through with the process that was going through the zoning department.
Okay, so now we need to give staff direction?
I haven't yet.
Okay.
In fact, I just talked to the, the neighbors, and so I'll be talking to Jeremy.
Okay. Any questions?
No. Myself and Mr. Klesby went up here and took a look at this property. If every property owner would take care of these alleyways, right-of-ways, whatever, like this property owner does, the town would look so much better. There is a storm sewer running down through the back of his property. Yes, he did plant some trees off to the side, not around the storm sewer, not around, you know, any utilities that I could see. The area was really nice. Why somebody, from what I was told, it was one neighbor who made a fuss about it, maybe, maybe more, I don't know, from what I was told.
It was more.
Way more.
All right, well, you only mentioned one, so that's why.
There was more.
Okay. But why? Why? I don't know. If anybody were to go up there and see this, why would anybody complain? It doesn't make any sense.
It's the second.
But it doesn't make any sense why anybody would complain. If I were him, and the complaints that he's been getting, like, is, I'd say to heck with it. Let the weeds and the grass grow, and then every time it gets above twelve inches or whatever, call the town and say, hey, your grass needs cut. So then they send somebody up to cut the grass. But, I mean, somebody else go up there and take a look at the property. I mean, it's maintained.
Yeah.
It's nice. I don't get it.
Let me say, I've talked to the gentleman, I've talked to the property owners, five or six, I don't know how many, I think it was six. And they all agree about it. We explained to them what the situation was, and Matthew can verify it, go in if you want to. And everything's okay, so I'd like to see us just drop the issue and let the things go at their own. And everything's okay. So I, I'd like to see us just drop the issue and let the things go as they are, as the way they are at this point.
Well, thanks, Gene, and thanks for that. Good comments. So everyone's comments is, is accurate. Based upon my understanding of the situation and in talking with Mr. Walts and our last staff, or staff, I mean, our last meeting. We have a meeting weekly. What this brought up is, it's an interesting, we have a policy issue, I think. Staff did everything by code, right? So you're not allowed to put things in a right of way that the town has. And on a flip, like you said, Lord help us, if ever, it would be awesome if all citizens in our community took as good a care of a town right of way as this citizen did. So I've had a conversation with Joe and I think staff in the next month or two, they're going to start identifying right of ways and come up with a right of way policy. Is that, Joe, is that a fair reflection of what we talked about? Remember we talked about identifying policies, talking about banning, trying to encourage citizens to buy them?
Yeah, I don't know about the inventory, but I do think it's, it's probably a positive move for us to make an effort to educate the public on what their options are with alleyways and, you know, and the vacation process. Because, for example, a gentleman I was talking to last week, he's just started the process. He said he would have started this years ago if he had known he had that option. So I do believe the first step is public education.
Yeah. So I'm not certain what the policy's going to look like, but this brought up, it was a really interesting case, case study in a sense. And Gene, appreciate you coming out and Gary and Chris and Bill. I know you guys got involved in this. So, okay, I appreciate that. Any other discussion, any other discussion on that matter? We're open for discussion on any of the topics. Anyone else have anything else? Okay, with that said, I will entertain the motion to go into closed session regarding the EDA lawsuit, personnel matters and the Police Department financing.
We've read the whole thing.
Yeah. We're, we're getting run off soon.
Apparently he's not doing anything.
Mr. Mayor, I move the town council convene to go into a closed meeting, rule one. Consultation with legal counsel for briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711.8.7 of Code of Virginia. Two, discussion and consideration of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance of motion salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711.8.1 of Code of Virginia. Three, with respect to the Police Department, their orders, A, discussion or consideration of the investment of the public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where it may public, initially, if made public initially, the financial interests of the town will be adversely affected pursuant to section 2.2-3711.8.6 of the Code of Virginia. B, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711.8.8 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion properly made by Mr. Holloway, seconded by Mr. Tewolp. Any discussion? Mr. Napier, does that cover all the issues properly?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in, any roll call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, closed session.